Mayor, it is officially seven o'clock, so.
Are you recording?
I am recording in live, so you are good to go.
Okay, we'll call this regular session to order Wednesday, July 15th, the time is 7:00 PM. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, now we'll open it up for visitor comments. If you'd like to comment, please wave or raise your hand. There's Carmen.
Hi, I'm back. Is it okay if I go?
Yes, yeah, it is.
Great, so Carmen Dunn again. I wanted to talk about a couple of things and follow up from earlier. One is the conversation that we kind of had a little bit about parks and the opportunity for public comment. So there was a raise that not everybody can attend the parks meetings for public comment. I think that's also a concern for work sessions and city council meetings. It was really disappointing to me to be able to go and have have the ability to do public comment, but not have the ability to have a conversation with city council about a lot of those items. There's no chance for back and forth and it just, it kind of feels like the comments that I made earlier were made and then there were, there was feedback from city council, a couple of city council members that was really broad feedback and nothing specific as to what, what action city council wants to take. I understand that it was a lot to kind of digest, but just recognizing the, the concern that was raised and taking action on it, I think would have been appreciated. So whether that's taking into account what we talked about, maybe having public comment at the beginning and the end to be able to have those conversations and that back and forth feedback might be helpful. So that's my first piece. The second piece is I'm going to repeat part of what I talked about is that I, there was no action taken in the work session on any of the items that I mentioned. So one of those is that I recommend that city council actively work on a resolution in support of racial equality, equity. In my eyes, there's no excuse for not committing to having this conversation. This community is divided and there's a huge lack of diversity in this town, which we are lesser because of. If we want our community to become more well-rounded, more diverse and more inclusive, the city council must take action to make a resolution consistent with it. I will continue to be a voice asking for this until you address it head-on. Also note, once a resolution is made, the city must uphold this in the actions and regular updates. As new policies or changes in policy are made, I would expect the city council to look at that policy with multiple lenses. How does that policy disproportionately impact our black citizens? How about our low-income citizens, our homeless population? How about those with substance abuse? I urge the city council to not just listen, but take steps forward. Now is the time to not drag your feet and think about it further. I urge you to put it on the agenda next work session so you don't sweep this topic under the rug. It's my first item. I realize it's not a back and forth, so I'm going to go on my second item really quick. And if I hit my five minutes, feel free to cut me off. On the defund the police movement, I'm not going to repeat everything I said earlier. That's on the record and people can go back and listen or you can read, read the, the notes afterwards, but I do want to bring up that I really appreciate the willingness of Chief Greenway to discuss the issues in this community and his openness to reviewing policy and listening to citizens. I'm disappointed in the city council's lack of response in my initial email to Chief Greenway. Everybody was CC'd on it. I had one city councillor reach out to me separately to discuss. And for that, I do appreciate that. Thank you, Doug. I would like to hear discreet steps that the city is going to take to review the police response in situations that involve mental health crisis, homelessness, addiction, et cetera. How can we do better? How can we help our citizens and our police force? It's not fair to put our police force into these situations that can cause an immediate escalation just because they're uniform and the gear that they're wearing. I urge you to brainstorm, have these conversations, put something on the next work session agenda to discuss. That's all. Thank you.
Keith, did you want to, did you want to? You're muted. You're muted.
Oh, yeah. First of all, thank you for your concerns and, and getting with Chief Greenway on this and whatnot. I, I spoke to the chief the, right after both of the demonstrations that we had and talked about how we, how we can improve things, what we can work on. We have had lots of different talks in public. No, we haven't had them. On, on the other end of it, I don't know if you're aware, but I've been on the cat board for at least 10 years now. So I'm very much aware of all the issues in town with the homeless and the needy and, and everybody in town and whatnot. So we, we do think about these things. Matt Brown, our finance director, he's also on the cat board now and I'm in the process of hopefully getting councillor Carlson, Carlson on there to take my place when I leave this fall. But anyway, so we do get involved in, in all the, all the nonprofits in town, the, you know, especially CAT. We're partnering with them all the time on different things. They have the resources for all that type of stuff that we really don't have and, but you're right. I mean, it does have to be continuing conversations about all this. And we are having them, we just don't necessarily have them, you know, in a, in a public meeting. But we really haven't set any new policies yet, you know, as far as that goes. So I know the chief's made a few policy changes and whatnot that we'll be bringing up. And then other than that, you know, just, just say that we, we are concerned, we hear you and we are working on things. Sorry, we can't get all the information out faster, you know?
I, I don't know if I can respond to that or not, you know?
Sure.
The mayor got kicked off for a second, so I believe the meeting needs to go to Doug to.
Okay, Carmen, yeah, I got a few, a minute or so if you want to.
Okay, yeah, I just want to say that I appreciate that and I appreciate the partnership with other agencies, but everything that you guys have come back with so far has been very broad, that yes, we're working on it. There's no like, yes, we're looking, like with Chief Greenway, it was like, yes, we're looking at these policies. I am rewriting this policy. This is the steps that we're taking. And I think it would mean a lot to the community if you, if you recognized which steps are you taking. Tell us what's being done so that there's visibility into that and we don't think that nothing's happening behind the scenes. I'm not saying that that's what's happening, but I think there needs to be transparency. And this is a really important time right now and it's, it's not okay for you guys to just step back and not, not take action. And if you're taking action, let the community know that that action is being taken.
Okay, yeah.
Sorry.
Carmen, Carmen, I was going to address that. And, you know, basically we've all gone to a point where we listened to testimony. We, if we react to it right away, we don't have time to even research or do anything that we, to prepare for it. So that's why we try to set in the evening session, if we could possibly move your proposal forward and say, and give it to staff to study it and then deal with it in our next meeting. Because if we make decisions without really knowing and really researching, which, you know, the issue, then we're, we're kind of shooting it, we're shooting at a target that is not very vivid and we're not prepared for it. That's, I kind of think that's the way the council feels. I know that's the way we've operated in the past and that's the way we make better decisions. So if we made, if we came up with a resolution today in a work session and said, okay, this is it. And it's, it, we feel that it needs a little more time. So yes, we hear, and I agree with Keith, yes, we hear you.
And I, I get that and I think just you just saying that and saying that the council is committed to taking this forward, that's, that's a huge step in its own. You don't have to solve the problem right now, but even just saying, yes, thank you for your feedback. We're going to take that forward and we're going to do some research. We can't respond right now, but that didn't happen at all earlier, which was super disappointing.
Right, okay, and that will take an initiative tonight from one of the council to ask fellow councilmen to give that to the staff and take it forward and get it into an action plan.
Thank you.
So I apologize, I got kicked off. This is a miracle. I actually had to phone in. Again. And yes, I would agree with everything that councillor Morton is saying. What I, my comment was broad earlier, but we actually did, Carmen, I need to tell you this, that this has been on the city's mind for more than a year, that this type of racial inequality that you're speaking of. And it's not because of a movement that we started this. It was just because it was the right thing to do at the time. And we talked about it a year ago and I'd have to go back in reference to when we were talking about it. I think we may have drew up something on it. I kept trying to recall.
There's a.
Yeah, we do have a resolution.
The fact that you guys don't know what that resolution was and what steps have been taken, that is telling. That tells me that it was.
Carmen, I apologize that, I apologize that I'm not meeting your needs, okay? And I hear you. What I'm saying is we are taking steps forward to better our community, okay? And this one started well before this movement. And that was my comment and I will agree with councillor Morton. We will take it into consideration. We ran our meeting till five, what time was it, you guys? 5:45?
Yes, 5:43.
Okay. So we literally barely ate dinner. Yes, we literally barely ate dinner. And you are back in front of us again and we haven't even had time to really even process. I'm, I'm still trying to process my food for crying out loud, let alone half the stuff we discussed this afternoon. So that's why I guess what I was trying to tell you and we're looking at Connect St. Helens as a way of moving forward through this process because it has the funding mechanism and the right people to help direct it, not political at all. It, it's actually already started. So that's where I'm shifting my focus personally. It's through Connect St. Helens as far as me becoming a better person and pushing that out into the community to attract that back to me.
Carmen, this help business is a two-way street. Do you have a protocol when you contact somebody who's on drugs and homeless? Do you have the steps that they're taking to get out of their problem that we can help with? Or is everything that is to be done, is only supposed to be done by the city? Homelessness means jobs and if we have people who can't be hired because of their either mental inability or their drug inability, we can't do anything about that. They have to change part of the program so we can help them. Do you have anything in place to tell us what programs we need and what programs the people that need help are working on?
I can't tell you what programs we need, but there are so many agencies in this community that I think if you got all of those agencies together at the table to have a conversation, if you got police at the table, CCMH, like everybody at the same table, work together. You guys all have unique information, unique perspectives to collaborate.
I want to know the people who need the help. I want their input, not yiddies.
Yeah, agreed.
Not someone who needs a job and being a druggie or an alcoholic and homeless. I need to know how they're getting out of their own problem. I don't need.
Go talk to them.
Somebody telling them what they should do. Do you have any numbers on what the specific people need?
I, I don't have those numbers. I have made a request to Colombian 911 communication to get data on the types of calls that our police are going to and the frequency of those calls so that I can start to understand the data better, but I think.
I know them.
Reach out with the.
Personal input, not what is reacted.
Go out and talk to people. There, there's homeless population everywhere. If you're concerned about what their perspective is, go walk up to them and talk to them. Have a conversation with them. I don't know. I, I am fortunate enough to have a home. I am very lucky and I'm, and I'm trying to advocate for people who are less fortunate and who need our community's help. So if that is your question, part of your job as a city councillor for this community is to understand what our community needs. And if for you that means going and talking to those people, then go and have a conversation.
In fact, I have, by the way.
Great.
It was on the board of Lotus Project in Salt Lake for doing just that. And the problem we found that needed to be solved was the input from the people who needed help before we could help them. And it seems that you're always going back three steps and wanting us to do the whole work. And the program doesn't work unless the people who need help are helping themselves and then we can help them. So we have a number of community groups that are trying to help, but we need the other side of the street to come to the middle.
I think they have a lot of channels right now, the people that are in that position. And I think their last, their last step right now, this is a total assumption, would be to come in front of city council and present what their problems are.
So we all agree though, this isn't a, a quick fix. This is something that's going to take some time. That's why, Carmen, I will actually get your number. I, I should have it through the commissions. I will give you a call when the next Connect St. Helens meeting is. So you can be introduced and brought up to speed on what it is and you can see what, what actually I'm talking about until you've actually, and it does have the funding to, to, to facilitate for our community properly. And, and it's not political. It started a while ago and it's truly getting down to the, the nuts and bolts of, of what's going on in our community.
Okay, I'd love to be involved. Thank you.
So I will definitely do that for you, okay? And I talked about it with our judge, you know, we were talking about our school kids earlier in truancy. And I don't know if you were still on the foot, on the, in the meeting at that time, but I mean, come on. I, I'm thinking forward, you know, she brought that to my, our attention and it was like, holy cow, this could be a huge deal in the future as well. This could be bigger than, than what we're discussing right now, which is huge. But that is every kid left behind, okay? So we need to really be forward-thinking and, and this program will also help us out with that as well. So it's, it's definitely not a, a quick fix. We know that. And we're, we're committed to working and putting in the work. And, you know, a resolution, of course, you will look into it, drawing it up. But that is just words. Until we put actions out there, Carmen, we haven't changed anything, okay?
Agreed, but the first step is taking a stance. And once you take a stance, then you can be held accountable to that stance.
Yeah, yes, but so what we're, what we're saying, what I'm saying is we also represent all citizens, okay? And that we have to, when, you're not going to like this and, and I know, I'm not affiliated. This is, this has turned to be very political, COVID, to Black Lives Matter, to everything. That's, as I've looked at Facebook, correct me if I'm wrong, do you not see politics involved in it?
I don't, I honest, I think it's turned into a political issue, but I don't think at the core it's a political issue. I think it is not, it should not be a political issue, but I think it's up to the city council to discuss.
It shouldn't be. It shouldn't be. You're right, but it is.
Yeah, this is politics right now, this meeting. This is politics, though. City council.
Well, actually, actually, no, it's not. It's non-affiliated. We serve all citizens. We are here to make the best decisions for every single citizen living in our community. And yes, everything you said was true. I'm just, I just asked you a question and you got very upset because I said it turned political. Okay, well, it sounds, it sounded like it. I apologize if you didn't.
Nope, I'm not upset. I appreciate having these conversations and I hesitated because I think that this has turned into a political issue and a political movement. But I think at its core, it is not a political issue. It's a human rights issue.
That's all I was asking for you, just, was just to, just to say that, you know, whether you felt it was or wasn't. So yes, I would.
So mayor?
Get ahold of you, yes.
Can, can, you know, if we, if we craft, if we ask the, our, our staff to start to craft them a resolution, I think that could be the initiator for an action plan to start to move us forward. And whatever we, however we craft that, it should be, it should be an initiator, that it just isn't words, that it provokes some action from the council and from the staff to keep moving forward. Not until the, not until the issue is resolved. I don't know if it ever will be resolved, but to work on that issue.
I'd be happy to take the lead on that.
Perfect, good.
I was gonna, this is exactly the kind of thing, this is, you know, one of the fundamental roles of local government is, you know, it's foremost public safety, but in addition to that, it's, you know, to provide the space for the community to have these kinds of discussions and talk about these types of issues. And this is just a perfect example of that.
And that's what, that's actually what this, this Connect St. Helens brings, John, to the, is the hard discussions that we actually sit and talk like adults and not get upset and we have empathy for one another and we listen and we talk about the issues. And it always comes out, it comes out really well. It's worked out really well for Battleground, Discover Battleground. It's proven that it works and it will cover anything that you bring to it. It just works itself out through the model. I'm 100% sold on it, so Carmen, I will definitely get ahold of you.
Thank you. I appreciate the ability to have this back and forth conversation. I think it's a lot more productive than just having someone come and give five minutes of public testimony. It doesn't, I feel like that kind of stops there. So I think these conversations are really productive. So I would like to see some kind of mechanism for that to be more available to citizens in the community.
Yes, and absolutely. I, I think the school district probably, we could maybe even help advertise the Connect St. Helens for them as well, too. I think it were, I think we're at a point now where we can start moving that forward, so. Okay, so Matt, I cannot see your, my eyes. Is there any other visitor comments?
There is. Patrick Berkeley, I'm going to unmute you. You may have, still have to unmute yourself, Patrick.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep.
You can.
Thanks, I'm trying new technology. First, I just have to express, I, I feel very frustrated in that I know the city council has made attempts to make the meetings less messy, particularly during public comment time. And I understand that Carmen may not have been aware of exactly how the council proceeds. I think I have suggested before, and I would suggest again, that prior to public comment, you make a simple statement to the effect that no action is or discussion will be made on these items at, at such a time, but that city staff or members can be approached to discuss these issues or to see that they are put on future agendas. That is, I don't know if it still is, but that was the practice when I was a member of the St. Helens School Board. So when we opened that time, we did make it very clear to the mem, the people who were speaking that this was not a time for discussion and decision. The discussion, of course, is so very important and I, but that by making such a statement and making it clear to people and then assuring folks that the issue will be addressed at a later time in a public setting where there can be the give and take would be appropriate. A second thing is after sitting through the entire work session and listening and seeing what has gone on for the past 20 minutes, encourage the city, I know for a short while you were, before each meeting or before you got into business, reading your agreements for meetings and your standards for communication and treatment of each other and I would hope, members of the public. I, I always am nervous, you might not know that, when I do speak publicly and after what I just heard and witnessed and if other people here witness, I can only imagine the anxiety that they might feel when they choose to speak before you about matters. Just the last thing is, and I think you have addressed this, while I'm glad the city has put official resolutions condemning racism and mistreatment of people, it is a fact that in our community, we do have people of color, people of different sexual orientations who do live in anxiety and fear in our community. And so yes, I, I'm glad to hear that there is some, that John Walsh has, is taking some initiative to draw up a draft or resolution because frankly, I don't believe this of you as council members, but I do believe many, many people in our community are just hoping and wishing that this moment will pass by and that we can just go back to life as usual in St. Helens. And that cannot happen because we do have residents in our community who because of their national origin, the language they speak, their sexual orientation, who do live in fear in our community that if they do raise their heads, they will be not down. So I am glad to hear that the city is committed to doing more than just having a resolution, but to take concrete actions to ensure that in our city. Thank you, that's all.
I appreciate that, Patrick. Thank you very much. And yes, you're talking about our.
Rick, you are still connected, but we cannot.
Do you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, so I said, thank you, Patrick. I apologize. I had you on speakerphone. That's why you couldn't hear me. You guys, this technology is giving me a bunch of, but thank you for your comment, Patrick. And you're talking about our council rules and I'm going to bring, bring those back next, the start of next meeting because they just are guidelines to run a meeting by. Appreciate that. Matt, is there any other visitor comments?
The only thing I wanted to bring up is our building official, Mike, is available and online. He did not get to ask during his department reports if there was any questions regarding the resolution that is on tonight for the building code fees. So if the council has any questions, I'd like to give him an opportunity, if you do have any, to answer those before you pass the resolution. Are there any?
Okay, well, yeah, what do we, what's the raise and fees? What's the change, Michael?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Really, the, to, to explain why we're going through this as part of the e-permitting implementation process, we, we have to align our fee schedule with the state's fee schedules, or not fee schedules, I'm sorry, our methodologies with their methodologies. And so most of the changes that you'll see are just organization and methodologies with one additional fee that we batted on, and I kind of talked about that a little bit in the report previously, but that's the technology fee. And that fee is in place for a couple of reasons, to again, cover the cost of the transaction fees that we have and also to help fund, bolster up our IT fund to support the new equipment that we're having. And as we talked about in our goals, to also grow into new technology and services for the permit holders. So overall, there was not really, overall, there was not many changes in the pricing. There was a few in our plumbing, but again, that all related to methodology and, and the technology fee is, is 3% is what it is.
But can we, because of the problems we're having with the business and our HAPPY virus, can we postpone the technology fee to a later date, keeping the state adjusted as suggested?
That certainly is an option. The fees for the transactions will go, will be applied to us as soon as the go-live date in, in late August, September happens. So that was why we were adding it as part of the tech, as part of the fee now. But that's, that's up to you guys if you want to remove that fee.
Does that fee start in late August or September, or does it start now?
It, the, the entire schedule is active as of, when you guys, if you guys pass it tonight, it would be active as of tomorrow. And, but we, as far as its application, we can, I don't see any issue with us not applying the fee until we actually go live.
Sure, that makes sense.
Rick?
Yes.
Yeah, just, yeah, so I think, you know, I'd move forward on this, but just as a matter of procedure with this discussion, I think that we should have heard the resolution, someone should have moved to the resolution and then we could have discussed it in a question. So we were kind of out of order on our agenda and I just wanted to make note of that, so Kathy could make note of it in, in her notes.
Okay, hey, Michael, just hang on the line just in case, any other councils, because we're just gonna rifle through them, because I just got some first readings here and then you're the second resolution there, or the first resolution, actually.
Right.
So, okay, ordinance number, I'm gonna go ahead and go on with the ordinance, it's Kathy, here we go. Ordinance number 3254 and ordinance granting to Flatbeam LLC the right to construct, operate, and maintain telecommunication service in the city of St. Helens, Oregon. Ordinance first reading number 3255 and ordinance vacating a portion of South River Street right-of-way. Okay, resolutions, resolution number 1894, resolution setting building department fees. So now we'll open it for questions.
I move that we adopt resolution number 1894.
We actually need to allow for a public comment period before the resolution.
Okay, so public comments on proposed building department fees. Matt, you see any?
No, there are no public comments.
Okay, see none, I'm going to resolution number 1894, a resolution to set building department fees.
I move we adopt number, resolution number 1894.
Okay.
Second.
We need a second. Okay, motion's been made, it's like, go ahead.
And I would like, I would like more explanation on resolution number 1894. More explanation.
Okay, what, what did you want Michael to?
Michael, I want to make certain that Michael was finished up, that's all.
Yeah, I just wanted to explain a little bit of the history behind why, why this is happening, why we're putting this forth right now and explain a little bit of the general changes that occurred and explain the new fee that we talked about, the technology fee. If anybody has any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
I have a question. The technology fee is for the electronic permitting?
So the technology fee would be applicable to all, all permit fees. And they, it, it was created to cover the transaction fees that the bank applies to us when a transaction is made. It's a, through US Bank, it's called a converge account and it's something that's
On the total?
Yes, yes, they add 3%. It's 2.99% is what they average. And, and so went to 3%. And then again, the other part of that would be to help bolster up IT funds in our department in order to support some of the new equipment we have as well as grow into some newer technology or new services, electronic services.
Do you have other places, are other places charging technology fees?
Yeah, there are a few jurisdictions. The one that, and I apologize, I don't have all my notes in front of me, it's Oregon City charges a technology fee of 5%. And there are other jurisdictions. It's actually been quite a conversation amongst building departments. And it, and it is kind of, the, the industry is asking that we get with, you know, get with the speeds and some of the technologies that they have in their, in their industry. But those come with a cost. And so some jurisdictions have put forth a technology fee, others have done fee increases to accommodate for it, but don't necessarily want to itemize out a technology fee. I chose this route because I wanted there to be at least some accountability to what we're doing with that money so that the stakeholders in our area can see that we have charged them this fee, but this is the services that they're getting for it.
So, but we're gonna be a minute till the service is up and running, right?
Yeah, we, we are still another month and a half or so out before we will be going live. And so again, there's, there's no issue with us right now adopting the fee, but as a policy, we just won't apply the fee until the go-live date.
Okay.
If that's
Any other questions?
If that's the direction that you guys want to go.
That's the direction I want to go. I want to make sure somebody paid for it, that's available.
Yeah, it seems fair to me that you don't pay for it until you have it.
Yep.
So would you like to amend the resolution, Doug?
You silence.
Actually, we'll just go ahead.
Yeah, he was muted.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Yeah, I just wanted a chance to explain all the way through and give him an opportunity to say exactly what he wanted to say. And I thought he was cut short when, you know, during the, during the process. So that's why, that's why I mentioned that. And that's why I questioned.
So legally, let's go ahead and vote on it the way it is, but it'll have to be amended, so we'll have to come back to this, okay? So we'll have to shoot it down first, because there's already been a motion and a second. On, if you guys are wanting to wait to implement the fee till it's up and running. So there's been a motion made and seconded for 1894 as presented. All in favor? Opposed? Aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now we're gonna reread, resolution 1894, a resolution to set building department fees.
Will we approve resolution 1894 amended to the fee after the system is in place? Second.
Okay, most have been made and seconded to amend resolution 894 to implement the fee once the system is in place. All in favor? I'm gonna do a roll call. Actually, actually, I'm gonna do a roll call, so it helps Kathy out. So I'm gonna start with Council President Morton.
Aye.
Counselor Locke?
Aye.
Counselor Carlson?
Aye.
Counselor Topaz?
Aye.
Mayor Shoal is a aye.
Good work, guys.
Yes, yes. Okay, resolution 1895, a resolution of the Colling Council of the City of St. Helens, Oregon, amending resolution 1889, the city employee compensation plan for seasonal public work, summer crew, and seasonal recreation assistance.
I move we adopt resolution 1895 as read.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to approve 1895 as read. Counselor Morton?
Aye.
Counselor Locke?
Aye.
Counselor Carlson?
Aye.
Counselor Topaz?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Okay, it's unanimous. Resolution 1896, a resolution to authorize application for community development block grant fund for COVID-19 emergency assistance, public service, and emergency small business and micro enterprise assistant grant programs.
Will we approve resolution 1896 as read?
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to approve eight, resolution 1896. Council President Morton?
Aye.
Counselor Locke?
Aye.
Counselor Carlson?
Aye.
Counselor Topaz?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Okay, approve and authorize for signature, A, extension of agreement with Structural Nexus LLC for structural plan review services, B, request for full reconvenance for 340 West Street, Grafton, Savadora, Doverda cat loan payoff, and C, contract payments.
Move we approve and authorize for signature, items A, B, and C as read.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made.
I'd recuse myself from 6B.
Okay. Okay, Keith is gonna recuse himself from 6B. Okay, so motion's been made and seconded to approve, authorize for signature A through C. Counselor President Morton?
Aye.
Counselor Locke?
Aye, excluding B.
Yes, Counselor, Counselor Carlson?
Aye.
Counselor Topaz?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Consent agenda for acceptance, A, library board minutes dated May 11th, 2020, and B, arts and cultural minutes dated September 24th, October 1st, and December 3rd, 2019.
Will we approve consent agenda for acceptance, items A and B?
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to approve consent agenda A and B. Counselor President Morton?
Aye.
Counselor Locke?
Aye.
Counselor Carlson?
Aye.
Counselor Topaz?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Consent agenda for approval, A, declaration surplus property, police vehicles, B, surplus property IT equipment, C, council work session, executive session, public hearing, and regular session minutes dated June 17th, 2020, and D, accounts payable bill list.
Will we approve consent agenda for approval, items A through D as read?
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to approve consent agenda A through D as read. Counselor President Morton?
Aye.
Counselor Locke?
Aye.
Counselor Carlson?
Aye.
Counselor Topaz?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Okay, so we have a lot going on with the city. You know, it was a good conversation earlier, you know, we have been working on the, the goal system for quite some time and trying to move this city forward in a fashion that is really gonna get some work done in a, in a big hurry. And it was kind of a little bit arduous, it seemed like, earlier. We had a little bit more on our plate than we should have. But that is the concept that we are gonna be going with. And I would definitely, I'm not opposed to, or I'm definitely in favor of never making the decision during the daytime, even if it's very minute. And so that being said, what I need to also do before I forget, is we had some action items earlier that were kind of minute, but not really. And I didn't hear no public comment on them. And we gave the public a chance to make a comment and we had some decisions to make. So I'm gonna turn it over to Matt Brown and he's going to give us our, the few different directions that we wanted, we have to make a decision on. So Matt?
Thank you, Mayor. There are six things from the work session that were discussed and asked to move forward. So the first item up there was brought up by our, our judge about looking into a truancy program. And this is for her, the chief in the school district, to do a little bit more research on what that program would look like. And it would eventually come back to you when that is done, to fully be vetted out and answer any questions. So would you like Judge Lindgren and staff to move forward on looking at a truancy program?
Is that just a thumbs up, not a head nod?
Yeah. It should, it, it should be a motion.
Oh.
Or what's your, what's your feeling?
We could, we could make it a motion. I mean, there's no, there's no reason we can't.
We can give staff direction to move forward on the truancy plan, bring it back to look, look at it again.
We need to do that.
She hadn't fully formulated it yet. She just wanted, before she went further, to kind of get our feet on it.
Because her time is money. So she's, that's why we need, that's why we're, we do need to, we could make a motion to, because it is tax dollars being spent. But we, listening to her, I mean, I'm thinking, holy cow, you know, I mean, there's some big issues here with not just, it's not just the truancy, and it's actually a ripple effect of, sometimes it may not even be the child or the parent's fault. It's financial. It could be all kinds of different scenarios there.
Lots of stuff that could be arrested before it gets really bad.
Yes, so I am definitely, I mean, I'm not trying to persuade the council, but man, I am definitely in favor of her looking into that a little bit further.
Connect the dots.
Yep.
Interestingly enough, this is kind of the first step towards holding homelessness five years down the road. So it should be pursued at this point with as much rigor as we can and following the judge's strong recommendations.
Yeah, break the cycle of poverty for sure, because these kids need to get a good start.
Yeah.
With that, I'd like to make a motion that we follow the judge's recommendation for truancy and allow staff to go forward as an action item.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to let AB continue to pursue the truancy aspect and report back to us. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, counsel.
I'm not doing a roll call. So anybody opposed? If I don't hear or oppose, that means you're in favor of, okay?
Yeah, you have to say, everybody said yes. You have to help.
Yep, everybody said yes. Moving on to, moving on to the next topic, we discussed this during one of my action sheets about the commissions that the city has. There were two ideas that were thrown out to review of, instead of them being official commissions, of them being friends of the city programs, that would be general friends of the city for the Arts and Cultural Commission as well as a Friends of Committee for the Youth Council to move into more of the rec program. So those were two ideas that we wanted to get your opinion on. If you would like to move forward on either one of those, both or just one, that would be up for discussion.
I'd, I'd certainly like to table those for, they don't seem to be a circumstance that warrants any kind of action item or activity at this point. And I'd like to, to table that for maybe three meetings or four meetings from now.
I have comments. Youth Council doesn't have the capacity to have official meetings right now. So if we're not gonna go the way of a friends meeting, then we're gonna have to pause the youth council meetings. Because we do not have capacity with COVID and the school distance learning to be holding regular scheduled meetings with minutes all of agendas and stuff. We don't have the capacity.
So the friends would help you out. The friend solution is definitely one way you guys would report.
The kids don't want to do stuff because they're locked up. But we just, I don't want to get us into hot water because they're not having official meetings.
You won't get into hot water. The whole nation is not having meetings. I mean, it's like, it's like You won't get into hot water, the whole nation is not having meetings, I mean, it's like, it, it's like, that's, we're in a, we're in a pandemic, I mean, there's, there's no excuses, I mean, you don't need to make excuses, they're already there. Uh, you can't have meetings, you can't have meetings, it doesn't mean that we cancel out the entire commission, or the committee, or the group, uh, put it on hold, we're fine.
Well, they, they, they could actually have meetings, they can.
By the governor and things like that, I don't think there's any problem with not holding meetings for any number of months until we know where this is going.
Right.
Yeah, I will, I, I will bring back a proposal with an outline of what we wanna go forward with the next meeting.
Good.
Because what we're, what we're doing is not working. The way it has been the last two minutes and two months is not working, so I'll come up with something else with my team.
Well, I, I.
Jenny, I think your ideas are gonna be more needed for a bunch of things, go for it, and I think your kids are probably a little more creative and coming up with some good solutions than we are.
Yeah, the kids wanna capture all the kids in the committee, in the community, and be more helping us be a better place for all our youth, not just a select few, and I wanna give them the freedom to form a group that it makes meaning for our community, as opposed to shoving them in a box as a committee.
So we can talk about it.
We'll come up with a proposal and bring it back.
Here's what I like about it, is right now, e- even with the newer restrictions, which she said ten or, which is confusing, 'cause it could be twenty-five, but it's ten, I guess, for barbecue's at your house, I, I guess that's what it is. But it's twenty-five in the building, and it's up to fifty outside, uh, no mask with six foot of separation, a mask without, so, uh, uh, without separation, so I'm definitely in favor of letting you guys loose as far as, um, allowing you to start a meeting.
We're doing stuff outside, keep the kids' mental health, to help them the best we can.
Yes.
Yep, yep, so I would, it's very confusing, the guidelines, 'cause they're constantly changing, and, uh, um, and I get why they're going, hey, you know, all of a sudden we're tied to this entity that's not allowing us to have a meeting like we wanna have a meeting, you know, and I'm sure they're responsible young adults.
Okay.
Did that answer the question?
Yep, I'm, I'm gonna put, uh, I can work, help with you, Jenny, um, to put that proposal together for the Youth Council, and we will put off the ACC discussion for the next few months, uh, and we'll revisit it later.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
The, yes, yes, okay, Matt, on the next one.
Uh, move forward, so next one is the, uh, fiber study, that's the seventy thousand dollars that, uh, and the project that John and I would like to move up into the strategic plan, um, and then assuming that we are allowed to use the carers' funding that the city is going to receive to complete that study and start that study, um, assuming we can use those funds, we would like to move that study and action sheet forward.
If we're allowed to use the funds, okay, how do we put a stop into it if we're not?
If we're not, we will not bring, uh, the next step would be bringing you an RFP for the study, um, and so we won't bring you an RFP and we won't move forward, and we would update you on that if we were to find out that, no, we can't spend that money, uh, either John or I will update you at, at an up, at a future council meeting.
So basically, you wanna, uh, okay to proceed to find out what to do?
Correct, and then if we were, if we were, if we did get the okay, then at one of the future meetings, you would see an RFP for that study.
Okay, go.
So, are you making a motion?
Somebody make a motion.
I make a motion that Matt and the crew, uh, look into the fiber business to see how we should proceed.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded for Matt and crew to look into the fiber business, um, and how we should proceed, all in favor? Aye.
Aye. Aye.
All yeses.
Opposed?
All, it's like all yeses, yeah. Uh, next, next item on the list, only three more, um, is the Police Station Committee, um, so that would be John and I, Kathy and Rachel, probably, uh, coming up with a formation and meeting potential dates, and, um, a possible list of people that we would like to sit on the committee from the public, as well as entertain any names, um, or anybody that would like to volunteer, so we would like to put that idea onto paper and bring that back to you, um, at one of the next future, uh, meetings to officially move forward on.
Sooner than later.
Second.
That wasn't a motion.
Uh, yeah, you have to make an official motion before you second.
We'll move when we do that, but it's, you know, our public testimony says that the issues regarding the police in general bear further community vetting, so that's why I move yes on the motion, as long as it's sooner and includes some of the, um, people in our community who are most affected.
Second, again.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded.
I know, I need to know what I'm voting on, can we, can you wordsmith that just a little better?
It's an a-hawk committee for the police station, um, for the development of the police station, Doug.
Got it.
Okay, and I think it's important to know that, yeah, that the council is the one that's gonna confirm this committee, staff is gonna come up with a, a slate, and it would be for your confirmation, so.
So moved.
Okay, so motion's been made and seconded, uh, to, for John and the staff to come up with a a-hawk committee for their development of the police station, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Everybody's in the best.
Opposed?
Everybody's.
Okay, good.
All right, two more.
Okay, Matt.
Uh, next one is the Utility Building and Court Building, uh, this is also known as the Bennett Building, this would be, we'd like to move forward with an architect RFP to come back and help design, um, and figure out what we're gonna do with the frontage and the facade of that building.
If you can find funding.
It was, well, it was rather expensive, but I think with the historical value of that building, I think it is, I mean, we need to also be a leader as well in renovating the downtown area, um, and I know it's tax dollars, and I get it, but it needs to be done right, and we're already kind of in the process, and it's, it's on our, it, it's in our lap, so to speak, right now, so are we gonna deal with it, or are we just gonna kick it down the road? Because I think we need to deal with it, I think, you know, just like Carmen Dunn was speaking earlier, that we have some issues that we need to start dealing with in our community, um, socially, uh, this is one of those things that we should kick down the road.
One of the things if we don't, it really gives us no, uh, horsepower to force anybody else to do it, so we really have to do it to set precedent.
Yep.
Yeah, I, we have to move forward.
Yes.
We can move, make a motion that staff move forward to, um, get a plan for the Bennett Building, and, you know, find offsets where they can. 'Cause it doesn't mean we're gonna do the building, it just means we're gonna make a plan to do the building.
Okay, and I got a second from Doug, I got a second from Doug, so motion's been made and seconded to move forward with the building, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay, Matt, last one.
Last thing on the list is the Building Inspector Discussion that came up, um, earlier, I know John had talked about the potential of a code enforcement slash Building Inspector, then it turned into a, just a part-time Building Inspector, and then it turned into a full-time Building Inspector, um, what I would like to recommend is that staff review some options and come back to the City Council with a few different options of what you would like to see from earlier discussions, and then the council can decide how to move forward if they would like.
Yeah, I want more conversation about it.
Second.
Okay, okay, uh, my whole thing is, is this has been talked about for two years, and so I just want people to know, this has been being kicked around for a long time, okay? Y'all were sitting in the Budget Committee meeting when we bumped it up and it got taken away, it did get taken away, so I just wanna re- remind everybody, except for Councilor Topaz, who was not a councilor even at the time, that the funding was there at one point in time, and we took it away. So we've known that this is an issue for quite some time, and the building permits, the numbers are there now, everybody said the numbers aren't there, the numbers aren't there, the numbers aren't there.
I was gonna say, our building programs have gone skyways, and as compared to the last few years, when it could have been a maybe, with our load now, it's not a maybe, it's a necessity.
So, staff, what I'm saying for me, and me alone, is please do not shy on this matter, and get it quickly back to us. That's my whole thing to, to the staff, that's my wishes for our citizens and our builders, and for Michael, guys over work.
Does that work, Matt?
Um, I didn't hear a motion or a vote.
Well, you, 'cause you said you wanted to wait for, uh, to give us a recommendation, so.
Yeah, we're just on the other things, we've done a motion and a vote to kind of, for staff to move forward.
That, that's the motion, for the staff to give us a better picture of the manpower required for the Building Inspector business.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded, all in favor? Aye. Opposed?
They were all yeses, Mayor, and that is the, uh, completion of my list.
Okay, so, um, actually, uh, you know, I'm glad that, uh, um, we are continuing to move forward, this city forward, both economically and, um, socially, you know, we're, we're, we don't always get along, we don't always agree, but we, um, are definitely gonna try to be more respectful of one another in our council meetings, and, and I am going to re-implement the rules. Um, it, it's very easy just to get caught up in everything, life, and just get disconnected from people, and I tell you what, it's a lot easier to be more aggressive, probably 'cause I like people, that, that's the reason I'm honorary, I guess, is what it is. I mean, I wanna be in the crowd, in the mix, and I can't right now, you know, we're in the middle of a pandemic, like Councilor Morton said, you know, and it's definitely affecting our children, I know it's affecting me, um, I just know that personally, you know, I try to, uh, make an amends when I've wronged somebody as soon as possible, but, uh, I'm still got my shortcomings, you know, I still make mistakes, um, and, and all I can do is continue to try to be a better person and better our community, and, um, I definitely, you know, with COVID, everything's been put on hold, you know, and I'm looking forward to actually being able to sit down and start having some of these community conversta- stations, sit downs, not trying to do it online or through a piece of paper, or through the paper, or some other way, but just actually have some good old-fashioned conversations, one-on-one conversations with people about issues in our city, and, uh, it's, I think we're doing a fairly good job, is what I'd like to say, is moving this city forward under the conditions that we're in right now, and we, we, as a council, care about each and every one of our citizens. So we are here, we hear you, we're listening, and, uh, I wish I was on video, so you could see that I'm, I, I truly mean this. Um, I've had some computer issues today, we need to get those new tablets or services real soon, Matt, so, um, with that being said, I'm gonna go to Council President Morton.
Well, this is, uh, pretty straightforward, and, uh, I just want to, uh, respond to Carmen Dunn's request, and, uh, I would like to ask the staff to move forward with a, with a, an action item, uh, that deals with racial inequities, homelessness, and dehumanization in our community, in some way, research that, staff, please, and, uh, and, and make that an action item. And I would like to motion that, and I hope that I, I hope that the council hears that motion as, in favor of it, uh, and we do listen to our citizens, yes, we do.
I will second, I can't second it, can I? I can't even second it, that's the bad thing about being mayor, you can't even second it, I need a second.
I'll second that, but you, you can second that, Rick.
I can?
Sure.
Are you sure about that? Kathy, can I second it? Kathy, can I legally second it?
I believe you can.
Okay, well.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yep. So, uh, motion been made and seconded to have John Walsh, um, draw up, um, a resolution with some meaning on mental illness, um, homelessness, uh, racial indiscretions, and, uh, bring it back to us, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, I think we missed a couple, a few things there, it's the diversity, yeah, diversity, equity, and inclusions.
Yeah, that's the message.
Yeah.
Uh, okay, so, yes.
Equity.
Okay. So, that being said, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay.
I think we need more study.
You need what?
You said nay?
Social help group. We, we gotta make the floor available to them, but we're not a social help group.
Did you vote against it, Councilor Topaz?
He did.
Yes, I did.
He did.
Okay, thank you.
And, and Steve, I didn't hear the reason why.
I think it's a little more complex, we're, quote, a business group, if you would, not a social group, and yet the lines are very good. We've got a lot of social groups in this town, which we ought to help, a- and somehow reinforce their job. I, I just think it's a, uh, problem of what our responsibility is, we should make, as I say, the road available to let the groups that do this business in our town have a easy way of doing it.
Thank you.
Well, this, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
Your section of our city.
Okay, um, Councilor Morton, do you, Councilor Morton, do you have anything else you wanted to report on?
That's, that's it, that's, that's it, I just wanted to get that through so that we could, the staff can move forward, uh, on, on working with that, uh, action item as a, with a resolution as an initiator, uh, uh, to continue to move forward.
Okay, thank you, Council President. Um, Council Locke.
So, yeah, just a little more comments on that, just, uh, for, for staff and Carmen both, that, uh, like I said before, you know, I, I've been on CAT for at least ten years now, and Matt's been on there a couple of years, and there's been other, uh, city officials, and there's, there's, all three counties are, have commissioners on the CAT board, but there's also five, uh, people on the CAT board that are on low income, and that's because, so that we can listen to them and hear them, what they're, what they need, and all the other problems that come with that, so, uh, very diverse group, and that is CAT's forte is to take care of resources for people. So, but yes, we can help them, and we can, we can also do more marketing for them, and, and they do, uh, CAT is also self, uh, or, uh, we need more, we've had, uh, two or three retirements, and a couple of other people leave, so we're short-staffed at the same time, and money's always an issue. Uh, right now, some of the problems are that there's, there's too much money out there, and, uh, the federal government calls you up one day and wants you to put in a grant and tells you you've got ninety days to spend this money, so, uh, sometimes it's real hard to spend money for good causes. So, that's all I got to say.
Okay, Council Carlson.
Um, I, I, I just wanted to follow up, um, you know, I, equity's kind of what I do, that's kind of how I walk it out, but this city is, the resolution is the touchstone for everything we do, it means that when we put in a park, we make sure it's fully accessible. When we do bathrooms, they're accessible for all, and the city has done steps to have inclusion with public restrooms, with.
And the city has done steps to have inclusion with public restrooms, with public paths, with public parks. And it's, it's a slow process and government moves slow. The resolution is a, is, might be a starting gate, but by all means, it's not the finish line. And we have a long way to go, um, in partnering with those agencies and being a leader of what inclusion looks like. It doesn't mean we have to build houses for people. It means that we have to set an example of what inclusion looks like. And, you know, we have a lot of people, businesses too, that are disadvantaged because of their environment. So I definitely, I hear that every day that I'm in this community. So it is not news to me that people of, that come from different backgrounds are not treated fairly. Their kids are bullied. That's not news to me. And we've been trying to formulate an actual plan that so it would be more than a resolution, so it would actually be action items. Because words are just words. And, you know, you just got to have action too. So I hope that this is the catalyst that gets us a whole road to where we have meaningful content. And the youth are very excited about having socially distant meetings in the park. They just don't call meetings. It's sitting in a circle of youth, though. But they enjoy seeing each other and they feel better. At least they get to see some of their friends. And I appreciate everybody for their public testimony. That Parks Report was like stellar. Like I felt like I should have had tips for her. That was such a phenomenal Parks Report. Um, I use the parks a lot for, with my kids and with my work, and I just appreciated the thoroughness of the work that the Parks Commission has done in the last two years. It's really evident in the quality of our parks. And it's just evident in the experience of using, of livability in our community. And parks are important and never more important than they are right now that people need it.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I just appreciate all of the commission's work and Thad and his crew and their work. And I see public works out there on the highway, just really taking pride in our community. And I think that, you know, we can be better than the racial divisions and we can come together for this for all of our citizens. That's all I got.
Thank you. Councilor Topaz?
Keeping in tradition, a change in subjects. Uh, Rachel Berry arranged for me to have a tour of the uh, given to me by the, well, and Rachel, by the manager over there. And it was most interesting, uh, but the one thing that was not good was the, uh, tour of part of the mill that's being disassembled by Comfort. And there's a, a lot of bad blood between the manager from Cascade and Comfort, which, uh, he expressed to myself and Rachel. And since they're a big partner in this community, we better get that resolved. Because, uh, according to him, he didn't want Comfort on that site at all.
So you need to take that to John. You need to have that conversation with John to make sure that John knows of it. I hope it's not surprised him.
No, it's not surprised me. I'm very familiar.
Okay, because we just got to follow up in the right way.
That's it.
Yeah.
That's all you got, Steve?
Say again?
Okay. That's it?
That's it.
Okay, okay. We have a spot for any other business. John Walsh, do you have anything, final words, anything?
Uh, I guess, I, I didn't expect to be having anything to, to say other than, uh-
I know. Sorry to pick up the spot.
Alright, so I'm, I'm, I think I'm good. We've, we've got some ironed out some wrinkles with this new process, but I think it's, uh, coming along and a little bit of goodwill will get there. Uh, the, um, decision-making process that we're making early as far as motions and things typically consensus is really at the minimum, all we really need, but it's, uh, feeling comfortable with the motion too, actually, because it gives us a little more clear direction, so.
Yes, and I'm going to start doing roll call on just, uh, the, the other, uh, that's just what I'm going to do, so there's no confusion of where somebody stands on a resolution.
I appreciate that.
Yes, yep.
That really helps me with record keeping.
And, uh, could you just, Kathy, could you just make sure that, uh, in the future that you put the dunkle-isms in, uh, in my packet, um, every time, the 12, yep? That way I just know that's what I got to do. So you'll be helping, helping me out, helping us all out. Okay, everybody, um, enjoy this weather. The summer finally showed up, so, um, enjoy the weather and we will see you in a couple of weeks, two and a half weeks or so. This meeting is adjourned.